Good evening. Welcome to tonight's work session. We are going to be interviewing some candidates for the vacant board seat for Mr. Schilling's position. So, but first, we're gonna have the Pledge of Allegiance, okay?
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we have two candidates to interview tonight. The first one was Mrs. Alicia G. So, Mrs. G, would you like to come up to the podium? So, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna give you two minutes to make an opening statement. Then I'll ask you a question, and then we'll open it up to the rest of the board, and they can ask you their questions, you know, and it'll all be based on what you've said or off of your resume. Okay? So, thank you for coming out tonight. Go ahead, the floor is yours.
So, my name's Alicia G. I have been a resident in North Penn for 18 years. Really, right out of college, I moved to this area. And my husband and I have three children, Norman, Madison, and Sierra. Norman and Madison are twins, they're in sixth grade at Bridle Path, and Sierra is in high school. And I also have a brother who graduated from North Penn while living with me, so I think of him as my son as well. So, I'm fortunate that I've been in all phases of education in North Penn School District, and had children that kind of have been all the way through, and have been the benefit of really a great education for my children. Professionally, I am an educator, have been an educator for 20 years, 19 years, 20 years, in Abington School District as a teacher, and in Hattaway-Horsham School District now as an administrator. So, I certainly have seen the inner workings of suburban education in, at different levels. I also am, for 14 years, have been an educational coordinator for the Upper Dublin Education Foundation, working to bridge the achievement gap for historically underserved students. So, really, my life's work has been in education, which I think is why I feel so passionate about being able to get involved and within my own community. So, certainly, I hope that being able to work with the individuals on this board, I think this is a transformative time for our district, because you can see a group of people, and I've met many of you personally or individually, and had personal conversations with you throughout the campaign, or even before, and what I saw was a group of people who want to work together, who want to come to a common point where we can continue to build on what's already a great school district, and support our teachers, support our students, our administrators within the district, all of our staff members. So, I'm ultimately excited about being able to be part of that transformation within our district.
Thank you. So, what do you think were the biggest strengths or challenges facing North Penn School District over the next five years?
So, I think in, in public education in general, and specifically in Pennsylvania, certainly, just the balance of being able to be fiscally responsible, and at the same time, be able to meet the needs of all of our students. Certainly, we have a changing population throughout the immediate suburbs of Philadelphia, and being able to meet the needs of all of our families, and work within that changing community, and at the same time, be able to meet financially what we have to do, because there's only so much money in the pot. And so, being able to maintain some of the great programs that we have, but at the same time, knowing that there's a limit to how far you can go. And I think most of the districts are constantly, that, that's the biggest challenge. It's knowing that there's a, there's a finite budget, and you don't know how much funding you're gonna get in different areas, and how much is gonna be pushed to you, and trying to work within that is a pretty big challenge for, you know, a group of people to try to come to a common consensus on.
Thank you. Mr. Fusco, would you like to start with the questions?
Certainly, yes. Thank you. Thank you for coming. I'm curious about the work that you talked about in terms of addressing the achievement gap for historically underserved student, underserved students. I'm wondering, can you talk a little bit about what you've done, and how that might translate into your work if you were to sit in the board?
So, as I said, about 14 years ago, I started working with the Upper Dublin Education Foundation in Upper Dublin School District, and became part of a program that really was trying to target certain students and families that we really felt were not engaged within, within the community as a whole. And so, I was placed kind of in, in the community, and really, some of the work that I did was very grassroots in the sense of, and, you know, has been over the course of 14 years, in terms of visiting families' homes, having coordinating opportunities for the school administrators to get face-to-face time with families that normally would maybe not be at their parent-teacher conferences. It was coordinating open houses, or college nights for some of the students that, again, most of it was very much about access. It was very much about access, because what we saw was, there was a pocket of the community who were typically the ones who were part of this achievement gap, when you looked at the test scores. And in that pocket of the community, they were the families who were not always embraced, were not always, did not always feel like they knew how to navigate the system, or knew how to, who do I call when this happens? Or, if I have a question or a concern, what does the IEP process look like for me? So, much of it was, has been me working really right in the community. In terms of how that would translate, I think that's a unique perspective for me, because what I am hopefully able to, to bring is that knowledge of what kind of worked when we were, how were we able to engage families? I think that we did have some success. Is the achievement gap gone? Not in most districts in, in, in our area, and we still have a lot of work to do, but I do think we made steps towards that, and towards reaching many of our families who maybe felt disenfranchised. So, I think that maybe is just a perspective that I can bring and offer some ideas.
Mrs. Porkowski? Okay. Mr. Warren?
Hello.
Hi.
So, one of the, the biggest issues that we've run into, or at least I've identified when coming onto the board here recently, is trying to navigate our way through, or understanding our own bias for when something comes up. So, explain to me the process that you take, then, on how you manage, or recognize any bias that you might have when, when dealing with either topics you agree or don't agree with.
So, I can say, as I, I mentioned before, I mean, I've, being an educator, I've been fortunate to have a lot of experience just with, working with a lot of different groups of people. So, I've been on strategic planning committees where you pull one group of people together, and we all need to come to a consensus. And I've been on curriculum committees, and report card evaluation committees, and really where you have to work with a different group of people, in like a little fishbowl for a short period of time, and come to a consensus. And I think that being reflective is the most important piece. Just in terms of bias, it's, it's practically my job as an administrator to look at my own bias on a daily basis, and make sure that I'm always coming back to what's best for the family, the children, my school. So, I think that it's about, it's a personal challenge sometimes to be reflective, and to put the, the goals, or the vision of the district, the group as a whole, before your own, even if sometimes you don't maybe come to that agreement, but to be kind of supportive of what the group decision is. And I think that's where you ultimately end up. I've been part of groups where I didn't, I wasn't positive of the direction that we were going in, but I had enough trust and respect for the people that I was working with, that we, that I could go with that direction, and feel confident that we were gonna end up in a place that I was comfortable with.
Thank you.
Mr. Dziazia? Mr. Kafa? Okay.
Good evening. Thank you for your answers, and thoughtful answer so far tonight. What I'm, I guess, building a bit on what Mr. Warren had to say, I'd like to know, so you have vast experience as an administrator and educator, as a parent of students in the district, and as a citizen and taxpayer. As a board member, what is your vision for how board members should interact when it comes down to contentious, contentious issues? Whether it's collaborating amongst ourselves, or with the administration, or stakeholders in the community? Do you have a vision you can share?
So, I think ultimately, my vision would be that as a board, you would be able to sit at the table on whatever issue it is, whether it's full-day kindergarten, and each person's going to have their own perspective, and their own lens that they are seeing it through. And if you can try to find your path to see that, and that each board member would hear and listen to everyone regardless of political party, or bias, or, or whether you have children in kindergarten at the time, or whether it's important to you at that specific time, but that you can see it as just a, you're representing, representing the stakeholders in the district. So, that you can find a way to see it through their lens, and that as interacting with one another, that you really work as a team, that you are doing your best to try to, again, look at kind of your vision as a group. What are the things you want to get done in the next five years? Is it full-day kindergarten? And how do, how does that happen? And is that something that's important to the people that we're serving? Because ultimately, it is about public service. We each have kind of our own journey into public service, and that really is ultimately what it's about. Does that answer your question?
Hi.
Thank you. I think my question is, one of the things we've been really dealing with is, there's been a lot of talk of bridging some gaps between our, within communication, between the board and the community, between our parents and our teachers, teachers, administrators. You're coming from multiple angles of that. So, can you talk me through a little bit of the process of some of the ideas you might have to really bridge that gap, and create that kind of better communication in our community?
So, and to be honest, you know, I think you could probably take a couple breaths and give yourselves even credit, because the small changes that I've seen, and that people have made comments to me, are, you know, little things that just seem a little bit more transparent, that people appreciate. I do think in the sense of communication, that it's important to reach out to different groups, and not assume that everyone has caught up to our digital age. And so, I do think that there is a portion of the community, as we all begin to go completely paperless. What we've seen is that not all families are. Some families, some children are being raised by grandparents, and they do not have internet access, they do not have Facebook, they do not tweet, or Twitter, or chirp, as one woman said to me. And so, we have to consider all of the families that we're serving, and I think if you consider that as part of just what is your vehicle for communication. And, you know, does it mean that we're gonna suddenly say, oh, no, we're not gonna go paperless, let's start killing as many trees as we can? It certainly doesn't mean that, but I do think it does mean, let's take it into account, and let's consider what are our vehicles for being able to reach out to families? I certainly am a fan of kind of that public forum, or the opportunities for people to engage with you around even certain topics, that you think might be of interest, that you've heard are of interest to your stakeholders, and just trying to be as inclusive as you possibly can in all of, all of those realms. I think that that's important. I think, interestingly enough, I'm still in elementary school for one more year, so I am, of course, home room mom, because you do it all the way till the end, and, and, you know, we have a few parents who don't have an email. Like, for most people, most people not having an email is like so far out there. But we, I have to consider that, in that, and, you know, certainly, I'm not comparing being a home room parent to being a school board member, but I'm just speaking to the fact that you have, you just, that is my perspective. Like, I feel like that is something that I can bring, I can, you know, I have that perspective of being a middle school parent, and the transition from elementary to middle school, and where there's tons of communication in elementary school. And then all of a sudden, in seventh grade, it was like, wow, nothing's coming out, I don't know what to do, I'm running around like a, you know, screaming around like a hamster or something. And so, I think some of the, the perspective of that could be helpful in just thinking about it, and considering it. Sorry.
So, it wasn't too long ago that I was in your position, and I was standing at the podium. And so, if you were to be sworn in tonight, what would be kind of your first steps to kind of get to know the board, what's been happening? What would be kind of your first order of business to kind of then, kind of join the group?
I, it's interestingly enough, I just recently went through this process, because I had been in Abington School District for 20 years, in one place, in one time, in one, you know, and then shifted to a new place as an administrator, and had to get to know a whole new group of people. And I find everyone has a different style for doing this. For me, it's kind of sit and observe, and see how things work first, and talk to people. I, everyone's a different kind of learner. I'm a learner who, like, I, I learn through speaking with people, and kind of just to begin to learn, okay, how do things work? How, how do decisions get made? What, how does, you know, and there is gonna be a learning curve. Certainly, I have not been on a school board before, because I think, as I said, you know, everyone has a different journey to public service. So, I think my first steps would be to observe, and to try to get to know each of the board members on a personal level, so that I could see everyone else's perspective, and then for them to get to know me as well. Because it seems, I mean, in my personal conversations with individuals, is that everyone has, which is what's so wonderful about a board like this, everyone has different perspectives, and different ideas, and is coming from a different place.
Thank you. Mrs. Porkowski? Any questions, or? No? Sure.
Assuming you get on the board, aside from the personal aspect of getting to know everyone, what do you think, where, where would you start? What, what topic, what issue, what comments, plans?
I think I would-
How would you attack the problem? I mean, the situation.
So, for me, just in terms of background knowledge, I probably would start with a strategic plan. I mean, I, I've certainly viewed it in the past, but to look at it from the board member's perspective, I would start there. And then I think really just to be part of the conversations with the board members, to know where, where are we headed? Are there, are there goals? Are there things that we're, that you're talking about that I've missed within, you know, since November? And playing, I would have to play a little bit of catch-up. And so, being able to get as much information as I can about the issues that I need to play catch-up on, so that when things come before the board, I can be knowledgeable, and be able to make any type of decision, along with, you know, my fellow board members. I think that would be where I would start. I don't think there's one issue, per se, because I don't have a strong feeling about, I can't say that I'm like doing this because I want full-day kindergarten to go through, or I want, there is not, there are things that I've heard that I'm like, oh, I feel like what side I would, I might fall on, but not knowing the inner workings of it, I think that is my first order of business, to educate myself about what my job is.
Thank you. Mr. Dziazia?
Sure. Our budget is obviously a big, a big topic, and we're coming up on, we're in the middle of budget season now. So, having been with Abington, and with another school district now, and having some workings with Upper Dublin, any, anything that you've seen others do, creative ideas with either funding, or raising money, or cutting costs, or anything from a financial standpoint? Any ideas that you might have as we continue over the course of the next two months to try to close? We have a pretty massive budget deficit right now, we're $10 million, maybe, Steve? Is that, is that about right?
None.
So, certainly, there's plenty of ideas out there in terms of ways, and I do think, you know, it really is looking at, and it's a gruesome process. What I saw in, in Abington specifically, is looking at every individual item, and, you know, over the course of 20 years, I certainly saw where things were crunched in certain areas. And I was fortunate to be in a district where I didn't notice it, you know, the teachers took, I, I took a pay freeze one year as a teacher. Not, you know, not saying that's what we have to do, but there were things that happened over the course of many years, not in one year, that were kind of the long-term goal was what I saw. So, I saw, you know, saying, this is what we think can happen this year, and this is what we think can happen next year. I was fortunate as an observer to be able to see that there wasn't a lot of cuts in programming. So, it was squeezing around the edges in things like, you know, I mean, leave it or not, you know, supplies, or, you know, there were just crunches in other parts of the budget as a school, each individual school. And, you know, we have 13 elementary schools in this district, we have seven in Abington, but, you know, they were certainly, we were certainly able to save money in different areas. So, that was what I observed. I mean, I'm answering, answering very broadly to the question, but it was just looking at each individual item, and having courageous conversations about those items, and trying to determine what, what can you do without the least effect on the children? And at the same time, recognizing, again, there's a finite number to how many dollars are in the bank.
I'm sorry, what's? Go ahead.
Question, on your resume, where does the Upper Dublin Education Foundation, the years, it's not a separate thing with Upper Dublin School District?
I'm sorry, where are you at? Oh, okay. Well, so, the Upper Dublin Education Foundation is obviously connected to the school district. I was not, like, my employer is Upper Dublin Education Foundation, not Upper Dublin School District. I work very closely with the board there, and work very closely with the Education Foundation.
Does that operate similar to ours?
Um, yes, it does operate. I would say, and I don't know exactly how closely, but I meet regularly with the Education Foundation, the school board president, the superintendent. So, I, so, I'm a, I'm, I am an employer of the Education Foundation, not Upper Dublin School District, but I work within the district, basically.
Okay. And were you simultaneously employed with-
Abington and Upper Dublin, yes.
At the same time?
Yep.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. And Abington was kind of my day job, and Upper Dublin was my-
Anyone else?
I have one more.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi.
So, you've probably experienced this, again, you just mentioned very recently, since you just shifted in the supervisor spot. It's one of the more difficult things to, to move into a supervisory position, especially if you've come out of a, a body of, of the people you might be supervising. So, it doesn't look like you're in that spot. But it will be different for, if you're coming out of a supervisory spot at the administrative level, and then shifting over to the board, which is at more of a strategic level, and not in the weeds. And all of us struggle with staying out of the weeds, just to begin with. What would you, what would your plan be, then? How would you approach making sure that you are taking off your administrator hat when you're walking through that door, and then putting on your board member hat? How would, how do you, how do you see yourself making that split?
So, my husband would say that I'm a chameleon completely, because I am part of different organizations, and that is exactly what I do. It's kind of like they're just separate pieces for me. And because I'm, I am kind of an interpersonal people person, I'm, say that that's a, I mean, I'm, that is a strength of mine. Like, I'm able to kind of shift, I'm part of a lot of different organizations, and hold positions in, in those places, and feel comfortable being able to know, what is my calling here, as opposed to what is my calling, you know? I, I went from being the president of HSA, and then I was just, you know, home room mom, and I'm okay with that. It was fine. I think you know what your job is in the place where you are. So, I think that is, and that's how you don't get caught in the weeds. So, you know, I know certainly what my job is as an administrator, I have a complete, my, I'm serving my elementary school, where I, you know, and the teachers, and the students, and the families there, in a complete different district, whereas, you know, here, ultimately, it's a volunteer position, and it's public, you know, it is public service. I'm serving my community members, I'm, my neighbors, the children, my, my own children, other people's children. So, I see it as just a very, you, you just have to separate out what you're, what you're doing.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any other questions, or? All right. Thank you, Mrs. G. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
How are you tonight?
Good evening. How are you?
Good. So, we're going to give you two minutes to make an opening statement. Then I'll start with the questions, and then we'll go around the board, and everybody else will ask you their particular questions, okay?
Yeah, sounds great. Thank you all for having me here. It's a real honor to be considered, no matter the outcome. I'm, I'm just happy to be here, and happy that I got the opportunity to speak in front of everyone. I'm here today because, you know, throughout the last couple of years, and the recent local elections, my wife and I had a couple of people come to the door, and they said, hey, you know, I'm so and so, what do you know about your local community? And we both looked at each other and said, you know what? We don't know enough, and it was a little embarrassing. So, when we went, so, throughout that process, and through talking to individuals that I know, and some of you are on the board, really felt like it was the time to be more involved, felt like it was a time that, you know, not knowing enough about your community wasn't acceptable, especially given the, the climate that we're all going through right now. And really, a desire to be involved in education, and a desire to be involved with the youth in our community. I have two, two young daughters, who I expect to go through the North Penn School District, and wanted to ensure that, not only for them, but for all the students, all the, all the children, all the faculty, all the staff that work here, that the school remains elite, the district remains elite, and they, they have all the opportunities in the world to express themselves, to be able to have an elite education, and, you know, set them up for success as they go into their, the rest of their lives. So, a lot of that comes from being the product of a teacher household. A lot of my family members are teachers. My mother worked in the Upper Marion School District for over 30 years as a math teacher. My dad currently works for the Narstown School District as a skilled maintenance. He's been there for over 25 years. My aunt worked for Narstown in the administration building as well. So, been through a lot of the ups and downs, a lot of the conversations on the periphery about what they were going through, and what, you know, they experienced in the different areas of the school district. And, you know, currently, my brother, his wife, my other brother's wife, my cousin, they're all teachers in various, you know, elementary, middle school, and high school levels. So, have been well-versed in all of that, and have been sort of the, you know, have heard the, the different challenges that they have, have been part of the conversations on the periphery. I work, and have worked in financial services for 13 years. Most of that experience is in qualified retirement plans, so have a lot of experience working in with defined contribution, defined benefit plans, non-ARISA, and ARISA 403B plans, and a lot of various investment background. Have worked with children for many years, have been a coach specifically in Narstown as a, in, in youth football, and was a member of the Narstown Youth Eagles Board. And a lot of that work that I did there, not only working with the children and being a part of that, but also fundraising, and being a part of making sure that the budget and everything was set up, so that going forward, that program could thrive when I was, when I had departed. So, one of the greatest achievements we had during that time was raising about $80,000 in equipment. in equipment for that small little organization. And a lot of that came through grant writing, a lot of hard work in the community, working with different businesses, trying to get, gain their support and transfer our enthusiasm for the program to them. And I think that communication and that skill is something I've learned over time. Part of my journey in, in my professional career was working for independent schools in, not in fundraising, so capital campaigns and, and whatnot. Worked for the Hill School in Pottstown and worked for La Salle College High School in Windmore. And through that worked on many multimillion dollar campaigns, helped establish annual funds. And really, a lot of that work was, as I said, transferring our enthusiasm for the projects and the things that were going on at the school to the alumni base, to the parents, to the teachers, because it takes the whole community to support any kind of initiative that involves money, time and resources. So a lot of that, you know, I think transfers well into, you know, working in the public sector and in the public school as well. So really excited to be here, really glad that I had the opportunity to come out and feel like my background, my set of skills will work well in this team and hopefully get the chance to do that.
Thank you. Okay, so what do you think are the strengths and challenges facing North Penn over the next five years?
I think the reputation of the school district is a real strength, you know, as, when you see the school rankings that come out, I know from looking at real estate recently and going through that whole process that, you know, North Penn has always looked, is always ranked highly in terms of schools in Pennsylvania. And I know that we've stayed in the district for that reason. We, you know, we looked at moving and we said, you know what? If, if the school district is not as good as North Penn, then we're not going anywhere. One of the challenges, and I know from as an outsider and hearing it from other people in the community, is how large the high school is. I, I, a lot of the narrative that I hear is the elementary schools are great, the middle schools are great, they're, they're all wonderful, but then you get to this big conglomerate of a high school and you feel like, you know, there's an opportunity that children or, or your, your, your son or daughter could get lost in that shuffle. I went to a big school, Springford, so I know what it's like to be part of a big school and how that can work well. You know, some of the challenges that I see or that I've heard or that I've talked about, diversity, having, having worked in Narstown and being a, you know, a primarily non-white area and, and going in through that and, and understanding what it's like to be a part of a community where there is, there is a dichotomy. I, I think that North Penn, not only in racial and, and things like that, but I believe that financially, the school district is so large that you have a range of economic factors too. So you have, you know, lower income families and higher income families and making that all mesh and work together is, is difficult. And then I know that some of the buildings are, are due for renovations and are a little older and need to be, to be updated and there's a challenge in funding. And I know from my work with pensions and retirement plans, pension funding is, is difficult and it's, the costs are, are always rising and it, you know, the more people you bring into the system, the more and more that's going to be an issue. So, you know, I feel like there's opportunity to really communicate a message and really communicate the great things that you all are doing and maybe, you know, aren't, isn't getting out to the, to the, to the general population as, as much as they are. But that's what I see.
Thank you. Do you want to start on the side this time? Start with Mrs. Ramich.
So I was in your position not too long ago. I was also appointed to the board and not elected. And so because I was appointed, I didn't have that experience of knocking on doors, attending forums and debates and really engaging with the community. So if you were to be selected and sworn in tonight, how would you try to bridge that gap or connect or, you know, kind of how would you get started?
I think initially it would be interacting with all of you, figuring out where and who needed to be, to, to, needed to be, who I needed to reach out to and who was, who were important people to just, to, to get in touch with. I know, you know, different members of the administration, maybe there's teachers, coaches, people that in the community that I should be reaching out to who know those people, parents, local residents, students, things like that, that I should be interacting with. I would start there. You know, a lot of what I did in, in, in my work in fundraising was, you know, cold calling people, doing a, heat maps, figuring out who needed to be touched, who needed, who needed the attention the most and going out and, and calling them, reaching out, meeting with them, you know, having those discussions about what was important to them about the school that they attended. So I think I'd start with the administration figuring out who needed to be, who, who needed, who needed the attention and who I needed to be and who, for me, I needed to know in order to, to get that, that ball rolling. That's how I would go about it.
Thank you. I mean, you're aware of the challenges we face in this district when it comes to financing a lot of the projects that we want. And I think one of the questions I have is, we're trying to build community buy-in. We want the community to understand, you know, the process and why we think we need these things and how we need to go about funding them. In terms of explaining that and the financial burden that it does place on people, how do you propose we address that with the community? How do we reach out and build that communication and make people understand kind of the needs and challenges here?
I think the first thing you need to do is understand why you need to go through all these and really get to the, the heart of, you know, amongst yourselves, why these things need to be done. It may be as simple as they're just old, but that's not a message that people are going to, it's not going to, not going to resonate with people. I think you need to get to the, to the portion where why, and then why it's important for them and why it's important for your school, you know, structurally to be sound in order to keep moving on into the future. I think you also need to be able to transfer whatever it is, the enthusiasm of the teachers, the students, you know, the coaches, the people who see these, these things and say, hey, we need to update X, Y or Z, a program, whatever it is, and take their enthusiasm for that and, and transfer that to the community. So it's more about taking what you already have and you know and the, and the resources that are here to help you craft that message and then delivering it as, as eloquently and as efficiently as possible. So it's not just putting it on a website and saying, hey, we have this link, click it and, and we could use some donations. It's going out there like we just talked about, finding out who needs to be talked to, finding out who those people are that really are jazzed up about what you're going to be doing and getting them to be supporters and promoters because you need the promoters first. So you can, we can, you, you can go out, you can say, hey, we need this, we need to do this, we need money for this, that and the other thing. But if you're not, if you don't have anybody supporting you within the community, then you're not going to get anywhere.
Thank you for your thoughtful answers and appreciate the preparation and your, the journey you shared with us on the way to public service. It was, and in describing that journey, there's your role as parent, taxpayer, community member, your professional role. Can you expound upon or share with us your vision for what it means to be a school board director and how that role, what that role means in the interaction with a variety of stakeholders?
Well, you're the top of the, the top of the food chain in the school district, right? So the, your, 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 your role is to really set the stage for everybody to follow. And I think it's incumbent upon everyone here to really remember why you're here and that is to serve the students in the district. So regardless of any other things you may have going on, I don't have children in those schools right now, but I'm sure some of, some of you do and many of the people here probably do as well. But, you know, I think I care about my kids and I'm going to support them and want to see them succeed, but it's not just my children who are, you know, my focus or should be this board's focus. It should be every student and making sure that everybody has an opportunity, at least grant them the opportunity or provide them an opportunity to seize and take it. Whether they take it or not, it's not up to you, but making sure that they have that environment where they feel comfortable, like I said, to express themselves, to, to go out and try things and do different things and learn. I, I really think that as a board director, that's your, that's your focus and everything else, you know, there are pieces and things that have to be worked out from there. But if you start with that vision in mind and you start, and that's where your focus is and you always go back to it and that should be at the top of every whiteboard that you go through to do anything, I don't think you're going to go wrong.
Mr. Giazzio?
Thank you. Thank you for being here, Mr. Moser. I'll ask the same question I asked the prior candidate. We're facing a budget deficit, money's always a challenge, funding's always limited, we're, as a public entity. When we do embark on large capital projects or infrastructure renewal, can you talk about creative ideas you have about how to raise that money? How to reach out to the community and, and get buy-in? It's kind of piggybacking off of Ms. Ott's question a little bit, but just any experience you have in, in, in actually raising the money and, and performing that outreach?
All depends on the project, you know? But when you're thinking about going out and reaching out for money, I think the one thing that has to be clear, and I think especially in a public school district, is under, is under, making sure everyone clearly understands how the finances work. And I don't know that that's always readily communicated, but I, I know in the independent school world, there were three sources, you know, tuition and, you know, endowment, annual fund. Those were the, those were the sources, you know, and there was no other money. So when we went out and said, why do you need money? Tuition only covers 30% of the, of the budget for the year. So I think understanding how the budget works, understanding in layman's terms how that works so that the individuals in the community understand, hey, I get, we, we pay taxes. I get that there are other things that come in that, other revenue streams for the school, but that doesn't cover everything. And more and more what I see are public school districts adopting some of the independent school model where they are fundraising, they have an annual fund, they're providing those sort of things. And to do that takes a lot of work. And I think communicating that message and then starting out with, you know, developing your alumni base. I don't know how developed that is or how much outreach is done, but communicating that message, getting those promoters, like I said, to help you with that message. And then, you know, you can get as creative as, as you want, you know, you can use online resources to fund small projects, you can do different things through social media to, to raise awareness for different things that you're trying to do. But at the end of the day, fundraising is about, you know, transferring your enthusiasm, finding your promoters and then targeting those individuals that you think have the money or the wherewithal to be able to help support that. And through those three, those three avenues, you're going to be successful or be as close as successful as you can because without all those three things, you're never going to be able to raise any money.
Mr. Warren?
Hello, sir. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
We try to be as even keel as possible when we're making decisions here. Can you walk me through your process for how to manage or recognize your own bias so that you can come to a, either a consensus, a consensus answer or something that you know that you can feel comfortable defending, even if it's not something that you believe in?
Sure. One of the, the things that I do, especially in times where I feel like I'm getting a little, you know, I'm getting, maybe digging my heels in or I'm just getting maybe a little bit more emotional than I want to about a certain topic or anything. I go to the gym, you know, plain and simple. I like to run, I go, I go work out and, you know, if I can take time away by myself, it may not even be at the gym, it may just be a walk around the building at work to just bring myself down to a level where I can think calmly, pull my thoughts together, understand the other side, you know, a bit more. And I think, you know, once you get to that point where you're, you're, you're level-headed and you can go back to whoever it is or whatever opposition that you're having, talk about, you know, tell me more about why you feel this way or why you feel so strongly and let me, help me understand where you're coming from. And I think a lot of that comes from coaching, you know, trying to get, get through to kids and, you know, why are you so upset? Where are you coming from? Being a parent, being a husband, my wife's here. And a lot of that, you know, some of the things that, that I pull from are things that, you know, I learned from home, you know, working, working with, that, it's my partner right there. So anything that I need, where I need to come to a decision or a difficult decision, I trust her and I go to trusted resources, you know, be it, be it at home, at work, whoever, and try to get their opinion on, on the situation. And what I'll say is, here's my opinion, poke holes in it, tell me why I'm wrong and then go from there. And I think with all that input and all that information, eventually, you know, maybe I'm still stuck in my, maybe I'm still sticking to my initial view, but at least I have a better understanding of where you're coming from and maybe there's a compromise that can become, that we can come to in the middle.
Mrs. Perkowski?
The grants that you talked about for the private schools, have you looked into anything that the public schools would be eligible for that we could benefit from?
I have not yet, but there are, I mean, I, I know that any public school technically is, you know, eligible for, you know, people can donate money and, and get a tax deduction. So I haven't looked into any public school grants. A lot of the things that I did in the independent school world, if you receive tax dollars, you are automatically ineligible for, for certain grants. But there are websites that I've gone to and there are websites that I know of that I can go look and find them.
Mr. Fosco?
Thank you, Mr. Moser. So most of us have had to campaign in order to sit behind this table and we've had to take positions on different subjects, sometimes against popular opinion. So there was something that I was curious about that I saw on your resume. One of the products, unless I'm mistaken, because I'm, I'm not a finance guy, it looks like that you do work with our education savings accounts, is that correct? Okay. So I'm curious if what your position is. Senate Bill Two, which was proposed last year, would allow education savings accounts to function a lot like charter school funding in that a dollar amount could be assigned to a student who then could use an education savings account, which would go into the account, as I understand, and then would be able to be sent to a private school of their choice if they were to enroll. These kinds of programs have been criticized because they take money from the public school and put it into private schools. So I'm wondering what your position is on a bill like Senate Bill Two and education savings accounts and where they fit right now in terms of public education and policy.
Are you talking, and, and I, I think you're specifically talking about 529 accounts? Yes. No, so that, that recently, the, in, in the tax reform, that, you know, 529 accounts were, were used, you know, solely for funding higher educa, so college, university. I can tell you my company's stance on it and then I can go into what I, what I believe. But a lot of the industry is saying that, you know, they weren't necessarily in favor of it either because of the, it, it, that money can now be included, like say, my family, we wanted to send our girls to private school. Not saying that that's what, what we're, what we're doing, but, you know, it is an option. But now if we were saving a 520, in a 529 account and that was earmarked for college, the fact that we have all that money saved counts against us towards financial aid in a situation like that where you go to a private school. So in essence, you're making it more expensive for me to send my, my child to, to not only private high school, but to college. So what I would say is that any money that can be used to help somebody pay for education is great. Do I think that 529s were the way to do it for private high schools, you know, secondary school, elementary school? I would say no. I think the 529 system worked really well in, in a deferred college savings account and that's what a lot of people use them for. I don't necessarily think that a lot of people are going to use their 529 money for, you know, earlier education.
Does anybody else have any other questions?
Excuse me, is the, is the SB Two, the 529, is that one in the same?
I don't believe so. No. This is not something, my understanding is that Senate Bill Two, which was narrowly passed by the Senate, I believe, last year, would allow education savings account money to be used for private school tuition.
And it's, well, it's the same thing, you know, essentially, because education savings accounts were earmarked for...
Well, they can also go, my understanding is beyond just tuition for education expenses and things. Really, I guess really my question is just the, the position that you have is in support of Senate Bill Two, is against Senate Bill Two? What is your particular feeling?
I would say, I'm against, I would say anything that takes away from accounts that were created to save for college, I, I'm not necessarily in favor for, of.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions?
Can I ask one final question to lighten the mood?
One, final.
So you mentioned going to the gym and running. Mr. Fusco and I bike, so June 10th, we're biking 100 miles together, and...
Do I have to agree to do this, or I'm going to be...
It's 100 miles, so...
Chris and I have a team, we're the bike partisans. Mr. Fusco's a Democrat, I'm a Republican, I understand you're an independent, so you'd really round out our team here. So I'm questioning whether you would consider, if you were appointed to the board today, would you consider riding with us?
If you provide me the bike, because I don't have...
That's a very diplomatic answer.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. What we're going to do is we're going to adjourn this work session, and then we're going to have, I think, a five-minute break, and then we'll re-adjourn and have our special action session where we'll have the agenda and the appointment of the school board vacancy is one of the last items, so, okay, so we're going to take a five-minute break.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, good evening again. So welcome to our special action agenda. I'm going to start off with announcing that we had executive session twice last week, Tuesday, February 27th. We had executive session from 6:00 PM to 10:30 PM to discuss personnel. Then we had another meeting on Thursday, March 1st, that went from 8:10 to 9:20 to discuss personnel and staffing matters. And then we had an executive session tonight, March 6th, at 6:45, that went to 7:20, and we discussed matters of personnel negotiation and potential litigation. Okay, so next up will be our audience of citizens. Does anyone have a public comment? And I think because the weather is starting to turn outside, we're going to limit public comments to three minutes.
Oh, absolutely. Hello, my name is William Patchell, I live at 404 Bonny Lane, I have two children, go through the district, very adequate, but you know, there's always room for improvement. First thing I'd like to remind the board of, we have a new Fed Chairman, Mr. Jerome Powell. If anybody remembers Paul Volcker, Mr. Powell is pretty much of a hawk, and it's told on TV, it's going to be a, oh yeah, a quarter and a quarter and a quarter. I'll tell you what, you're going to be like a half and a half and a half? Yeah, that's going to, that's going to really mess up the whole party. He believes in taking a punch away before everybody gets drunk. But anyway, I'm going to talk about the teacher salary situation in West Virginia. West Virginia's number 48 out of 50, wow, you know. I say the one thing about teachers, well, why'd you apply for the job? You could have gone to Pennsylvania. You could have, why did you take the job? Oh, you wanted to be home, okay. Well, then don't complain. You knew what the salary structure when you took that job. You knew what the benefits were. So, you know, a state that's been racked by all the coal mines closing down, the state is in really bad shape, it has an opioid addiction, it's probably number one in the country, okay? The state is in very, very bad shape. And so the 19 Republican senators which said, you know what, okay, we'll go along with us to these people, here's what we're going to do. It's going to be really revenue and spending neutral, I'm going to cut that 5% you guys got, Jess. Is that what you really want? Okay, they're cheering. Oh yeah, what happened? Oh yeah, the social service program, we got rid of that, you know. You have to do by what the budget says, okay? I was thinking of my own situation, 5K in school taxes. Well, let's see. Somebody might consider like, look, how about I buy $200,000 worth of muni bonds and we'll call it a wash? You send me a bill for 5,000 or 6,000, I got the muni bond, I got 6,000, it's a wash, I don't pay any school taxes. Now what would happen? You got $100 million in debt? How about five families get together and buy all your debt up? Wow, that would really be fantastic, wouldn't it? All the money that you borrow, all those payments, gee, it's going to five families? That almost sounds like a South American dictatorship. That's what could happen, because that'd be the only way that you can get money without paying taxes, and you know that America's on a low salt diet now, that state and local taxes. I tell you what, it's 10,000. There's going to be so many people over in Bucks County blowing through that thing, they will be getting a bill, oh, I'm on my quarterly lease, I can't believe it. Oh yeah, yeah, you owe about $5,400 a quarter. Why am I going to pay that? I have to take a mandatory distribution. Oh yeah, well, you'll have to take another distribution to pay the distribution. Isn't that fantastic? Okay? The last thing about the buses, this current fleet is nothing but a rolling pile of junk. How are you going to buy these buses? You can't afford any buses. You can't, you talk about, gee, I got a wish list. Stop with a wish list! When you say, Mr. Shiroki, well, you know, in 2026, we'll be down to no debt. How about, how about we go above and beyond? Hey, we were the first district in the Commonwealth. Hey, I was able to cut your taxes by 100. Well, how did you do that? Because we stopped borrowing money. You know what, it's a good year, 2018, you know what that stands for? Get out of debt. No person in his right mind, no home equity loan of credit, you only get two dependents on your income tax. Hey, how's that going to work out for the majority of people? Pretty, pretty grim. And I'll tell you what, your decisions are going to be made on fiscal responsibility, not on some crazy wish list. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Patchell, and you kept it in the three-minute mark. Awesome.
Most of you people know me, my name is Ed Madge, I reside at 424 Bonny Lane, and yes, Mr. Patchell is one of my neighbors. Dr. Dietrich, we did get to thank you, you gave us for Friday's work that we did, but I personally, I like my kid's version better. Reason I'm here is basically because I know you're going through a lot, the finances, that's one of the big key things. As you can see, I'm a bus driver. And for the last several years, we've been outsourcing to First Student. And I've been looking at the different articles that go in through the reporter and some of the other things, and the numbers just don't seem to make sense to me. I'm not a smart man, but I don't understand where, I know in one of the articles, it said, average cost per student in our district is $1,100 compared to $730-something for the statewide. Well, I hate to say it, this is not Potter County. We don't pay people $13 an hour to drive a school bus. Houses don't cost $400,000 plus in these places. You have to be realistic where you're at. First Student, the reason they need to put up their contract is because they went way too low. And one of the problems with that contract that you negotiated with them is, we are giving them routes that are from our retirement drivers, the senior people, 30-plus years. These people are the top of the food chain in our facility. Their runs are anywhere from six and a half to seven hours a day. They're the longer runs, desirable runs, great students, and we hand them over to First Student. They didn't plan on having drivers out on the road seven hours a day. They wanted to suck up these good little gravy runs, oh man, we'll get $300 a day to haul eight students down maybe to Matter Day or over to MMR, a couple of kids from the LC, and that's how we're going to make our money. They didn't plan on these long days. I don't know how much they're paying their people, at least $20 an hour, so if you figure they're on the road for seven hours a day, it adds up. They can't do it for $300 a day and make a buck. Don't forget, my tax dollars go, the First Student goes out to Canton, Ohio, or Cincinnati, Ohio, and it goes all the way to the UK, plus the stockholders. I don't care for that personally. I don't like somebody out of this district making money off of my tax dollars. I like to see local businesses do it. I like to see local personnel. We claim that our rate is so high. Well, one of the things we have, we have some fabulous people called part-time drivers. It's the backbone of our department right now. They perform many of the runs that have been kept in-house, they are part-timers, they are not paid as well as myself. My effective hourly rate is pretty damn good, and I appreciate it immensely. We hope we can give the performance like we did on Friday when the snow came down. If anybody paid any attention, we had everybody in this district home. I dropped my last student off about 5:30 over at Hatfield Village. I did four runs, some of our buses got stalled out, we picked up the extra slack, myself and several other drivers, went out to schools that hadn't been picked up, got their students home safely. If you want to see some very appreciative parents, you should have saw their faces. Personally, I don't think First Student would have delivered that kind of goods. One of the districts farther north of here, I heard basically what the first contractor said, too dangerous, we ain't porting our buses out on the road, parents, come get your kids. That's what they were told, a little bit north of here. We have a good department, we have a lot of good people. I look through these numbers, and I just don't come up with it. I hope I don't go over time, but, you know, I looked at the one thing where we have 1,880 students travel with 42 routes. That averages somewhere around 45 students per route. My route that I currently have in Bus 122 has a total of over 270 students every morning. That's a little inaccurate because I do not transport that much. Our high schools, many of them drive car, friends, what have you, so I'm more like about 210 a day. If I would extrapolate the numbers out, the First Student, $6.67 per student to my bus run, it would come out to about $1,400 a day that I would be producing if I was being paid at the rate that they are. I don't receive anywhere near that, and I don't deserve that much. We're fairly efficient. Our department can be far more efficient. Five years ago, my wife and some of the other drivers got the solid date runs, which we can do. We are constantly having to make changes, different developments age out. The students are all graduated, for instance, my development, Mr. Patchell's, most of the kids are pretty well out of high school, many are in college, I believe his daughter's in college. So you have to transfer that route into another area. Oh, we just got a group of townhouses, there's 52 kids just in that development. That have to remain flexible. First Student makes its money by being inefficient. They have buses, I follow them, they got five kids on a 72-passenger bus rolling into a school. I see it, I know it. That's not efficiency. That is definitely not efficiencies. They could be done in a van or any other method, but that's kind of, but they're not going to say that because they want to make the money off of that run. That's how they make it. I was told that by more than a few people. I hope before we make big decisions and long-term plans, because myself, I've been in this district for about 40 years, I've been paying taxes for about 30 some odd years, my parents about 30 years before that, we're in the long term, and I hope you as the board are here for the long term too. Previous board was here, many of them for over 20 years. We have to look out five, 10, 15 years, to not make mistakes now and leave certain things go to heck, like for instance, our buses, Mr. Patchell referred us to our buses as junk. My bus is 14 years old, has 170,000 miles on it. Believe it or not, that bus is more dependable, excuse me, more dependable than some of our buses, which are three years old, by virtue of its design and because it's a quality bus. Instead of a cheap thing, they bought it used. And it's been very dependable, pretty dependable bus, hasn't let me down yet with my kids.
I'm sorry. In order to be fair...
Yes.
Okay.
But thank you very much for your time. I hope you take this to thought.
Okay, thank you very much. I think on behalf of the board, I would like to also thank the bus drivers, they did a phenomenal job Friday, and we really appreciate that. Thank you. I know there's several of you in the audience, so thanks. Is there anybody else that would like to make a public comment? No? Yeah?
I've never done this before, so...
Okay.
My name is Cindy O'Brien, I'm also a bus driver, I live in Lansdale, Tompkins, and Township on Aban Croft Court. The only thing I wanted to say is, when the runs are subcontracted out, like as someone retires, and as Ed had said, they are the prime runs, they have all, you know, all the hours, it has the three tiers. We drive in tiers, so some have three, some have four. It dominoes, so that you can just make all the schools. Okay, some of the drivers who are longevity drivers, have benefits, have everything, aren't being used to their potential because they only have two tiers, because we're giving these other runs to First Student to fill in. So why not suggest to the routers to kind of break apart these runs and put them into the drivers that you're already, you know, they're already a longevity driver, they're already paying, use them up to potential instead of just giving the runoff to somebody else. Break it down, fill it in the spots so that they are, you know, you're getting their total use. Okay, thank you.
Would anyone else like to make public comment? Okay. Then with that, I do have a statement that I'd like to read on behalf of the board. It's the board statement in support of our North Penn High School students in their advocacy for school safety. It wasn't on the agenda, but we are going to just add it in here if you don't mind. Okay. So, "As the country and our community come to terms with yet another senseless act of gun violence, this time at Parkland, Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School, the North Penn School District will not succumb to the helpless inaction that so often follows these tragedies. The young men and women of Parkland, the latest victims of the school shooting, have told the nation that enough is enough, and we agree. The North Penn School Board wholeheartedly supports the students of North Penn High School as they stand in solidarity with the students of Parkland. We admire and encourage the efforts of our students to join countless students nationwide in non-disruptive advocacy for an end to gun violence in our schools. Leadership means facing difficult realities. We support this as a learning opportunity for our North Penn student body. The board wants to emphasize to administrators, teachers, and students the importance of the right of students to protest in ways that are not disruptive to the school setting. The board encourages appropriate conversation about dissent, civics, and the right to petition government in democratic societies. As the one-month anniversary of the tragedy approaches, we commend our administration for allowing students to determine their best path forward in expressing themselves in a positive manner while confronting significant and sensitive issues that matter in their lives. We are impressed by the intention to detail and the care of the administration's process in order to facilitate an increased level of civil discourse and a depth of understanding that reinforces the best characteristics of citizenship in our student body. We would like to build upon this type of engagement with students across the district so that they are empowered and engaged citizens, no matter which side of the gun safety debate they may support. We understand that creating an inclusive, safe, open, and constructive learning environment takes a major effort by the administration to address public safety, academic, and other logistical priorities. We offer the board's full support in these matters." Thank you. Next up, we're going to...
And in addition to that, Madam President, I'd like to add for community members an update. We do have this regularly scheduled Safe Schools Committee meeting on March 12th, it's Monday, at 6:00 until 6:45, and that agenda, I believe, is already posted, and the public is welcome to review that agenda as well as come out and comment and listen to the topics that we're covering. The board is also in discussion, oh, yes, and that will be here, that meeting, thank you. And the board is also exploring, along with the administration, Safe Schools Forum in order to have all community stakeholders in one setting being able to discuss openly the challenges, strengths, and ways forward that we have in order to resolve some of the pressing issues facing our community schools today.
Thank you, Mr. Caso. Okay, so moving on, we recommend approval of the minutes from the February 15th, 2018 action meeting as circulated.
Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mrs. Perkowski.
Do we have any comments or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Or Dr. Dietrich, the superintendent's report, please?
Thank you. Recommend approval of Sweet Stevens-Catsen Williams LLP as district solicitors, effective March 6th, 2018, at a rate of $160 per hour for attorneys and $125 per hour for legal assistance for routine matters, and $195 per hour for attorneys and $125 per hour for legal assistance for non-routine matters, as per the attached fee proposal, item BA2A through B.
Second.
Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mrs. Perkowski. Any comments or questions?
Can you clarify routine and non-routine generally? I would think tonight's non-routine.
Actually, tonight would be routine.
I'm sorry, that's what I meant.
Sure. Routine would cover, and there is a, the reference attached fee proposal does describe and give examples of routine versus non-routine matters. Routine would certainly be attendance at board meetings, day-to-day questions that might come up involving the operations of the school. Non-routine would be generally matters where an opposing party has an attorney involved and has made either a lawsuit against the school district or a claim of some sort of demand. Specific special education matters where there's a specific student involved. And basically, I would describe non-routine as primarily adversarial matters in nature.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Sure. Kyle, I just want to welcome you here officially, or welcome you back, because it's as if you never left. We had, we interviewed several firms, and our administration interviewed even more firms than we did as a board. And we looked at a lot of really qualified attorneys and a lot of really qualified firms. And we are generally here a new board, by and large, we've got the majority of new members, and we're learning, our administration is learning to get to know us, and more than anything, it was important to have stability with our attorneys. And so as we went through this process, the thing that we heard loud and clearly from all of our administrators was Kyle knows our buildings, Kyle knows our people, our people are comfortable with Kyle, and we've always had fantastic legal advice. So I'm thrilled to have you be able to continue to stay here and welcome aboard with a new firm in a new capacity.
He didn't win yet. He didn't win yet. We didn't vote yet.
I'll hold my comments for a moment.
Are there any other comments or questions? Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam President, if I may, just on behalf of myself and the firm, thank you for the board's support, and I certainly look forward to continuing to work with the district and serve really this wonderful district alongside all of you. Thanks.
Very glad to have you.
Next item is that I recommend approval of Rudolph Clark LLC as special counsel for matters as determined by the superintendent or board, effective March 7th, 2018, at a rate of $170 per hour, as per the attached fee proposal, item BA3.
Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mr. Warren. Do we have any comments or questions?
Yes.
Mr. Casa?
I would like to reinforce Mr. D'Azio's earlier comments and ensure to the public that this is part of an ongoing process with many of our previously not competitively bid services. And for the firms you see selected, and the two which we're still about to vote on, this has been a process that I've been proud of our team as a board working together on it with the administration to ensure that not only do we have the best services, but we get the best return on investment.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of Fox Rothschild LLP as special counsel for matters as determined by the superintendent or board, effective March 7th, 2018, at a rate of $190 per hour, as per the attached fee proposal, for item BA4A through J.
Motion by Ms. Ott, seconded by Mrs. Perkowski. Do we have any comments or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Great. Okay, moving on to fill the school board vacancy, I would just like to say, before we start our voting, that I know most of us, we're not voting against somebody, we're voting for somebody. It looks like it's going to be a difficult decision, so, so I guess we'll start the process, right, Mr. Shiroki?
I'm all set.
I'm sorry.
Before we start, can I ask a quick, when we did this the last time, not that I'm expecting to go to a break, but we had an opportunity to, as part of that tiebreaker, to have public comment. I know we already kind of did public comment, people knew it could be for a particular person. Can we take, can we ask for questions right now before we go into our vote, so we can just hear all sides before we go?
You want to have public comment now? Is that all right?
Is that okay? I don't even know if anybody wants to comment, I'm just saying.
Does anybody have a public comment to make on the school board vacancy?
Still three minutes, Mr. Patchell.
Yeah. And on the school board?
I'll make it shorter than that. I highly recommend the open bidding and the open presentation by these firms.
No, no, Mr. Patchell, only about the school board vacancy.
School board vacancies?
Yeah.
Yes. The one thing I will say about the school board vacancies, I did have a question, I said, were these party-endorsed? No one asked them, what party are you affiliated with? And I said, you know very well that it was either the red signs or the blue signs, well displayed out along Cow Path. And I said, I did have my sign, it was very, very large, although I did not recommend, you know, certain people that, you know, were running for office. And not to be detrimental, but a gentleman met me at Broadopad, said, are you the guy with those signs? I said, yes, I believe I'm allowed to demonstrate my, how I support. And I said, I'm active enough, and I go out and, you know, put my body on the side of the highway so that others can see my view. But anyway, you know very well that most of America runs on machine politics, and there's very few, I think of Bernie Sanders, yes, he's an independent, but, you know, we all know that it runs on party affiliation, we know that.
Thank you. Does anyone else have a public comment? Yes? Sure.
Mr. Patchell, I just want to thank you for that. I do want to say, the reason that we did not ask party affiliation is because, just to reiterate, the school board is supposed to be a non-party-affiliated thing. We are all here to represent the community, and I think that is a very important thing for us to do. So personally, I don't care or want to know what party people are affiliated with. I think it should be based on the merits of the person and what they bring to this board and this district.
We know how, like, it'd be very difficult, under those circumstances, it could remain impartial, but you know behind the scenes how it all works.
So if there is no further public comment, Mr. Shiroki, can you start the voting process?
Okay, when I call the board member's name, please indicate.
Just one moment, you actually have to nominate individuals before you would vote. So the first thing is to open nominations and take any nominations for the board vacancy.
Thank you. Already earning your keep.
Steve, can you also, Mr. Casa mentioned to me, can you explain how the voting will work here? You're going to call out individual board members' names.
I'm going to call out individual board member name. You indicate, assuming both candidates that were interviewed this evening will be nominated, you indicate your vote by Mrs. G or Mr. Moser. And we are starting in alphabetical order. The seventh vote will be cast by our board vice president, the eighth vote will be cast by our board president, and then we're going to rotate the order. The board president will always be the eighth vote, the vice president will go into the rotation. So by alphabetical order, it's Mr. Fusco, Mr. Casa, Ms. Ott, Mrs. Perkowski, Mrs. Ramich, Mr. Warren, Mr. D'Azio, Mrs. Stoll. And then the next vote will be Mr. D'Azio, Mr. Fusco, Mr. Casa, and so on. So that's how the order is going to play out.
Thank you. Okay, so first we'll accept nominations.
I'd like to nominate Michael Moser.
Okay.
I'd like to nominate Alicia G.
Thank you. Okay.
Are there any other nominations?
Are there any other nominations?
So then you could have a motion to close nominations?
Okay, a motion to close nominations.
Motion to close.
Do I need a second? Second, all right, motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mr. Casa.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Okay, once again, indicate Mrs. G or Mr. Moser. Mr. Fusco?
Mrs. G.
Mr. Casa?
Mrs. G.
Ms. Ott?
Mr. Moser.
Mrs. Perkowski?
Mr. Moser.
Mrs. Ramich?
Mrs. G.
Mr. Warren?
Mrs. G.
Mr. D'Azio?
Mr. Moser.
And Mrs. Stoll?
Mrs. G.
Okay, it's five votes for Mrs. G, three votes for Mr. Moser.
Okay, Mrs. G is appointed.
Great. Congratulations, Mrs. G and Mr. Moser. I'd just like to encourage you to remain involved in politics. There seems to always be an opportunity, there's an election in 2019, maybe you'd like to keep us in mind for then as well. Yes, yes.